Hello and welcome to the Tuesday, July 9th, 2024, meeting of the Air Planning Board. This meeting hearing of the Air Planning Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID number 833-654-80732 or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Danny Ruiz, Town Planner, at D R U I Z at air dot M A dot U S or 978-772-8220, extension 144, prior to the meeting. First order of business to approve the agenda, I just want to let everyone know of a slight change.
Oh, I think we're muted.
We are?
That's okay. Go forward.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
Do you have to reread this?
Yeah. Sorry about that.
Oh, boy!
You want me to?
This meeting, hearing of the Air Planning Board, will be held in person at this location, at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID number 833-654-80732 or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Danny Ruiz, Town Planner, at D R U I Z at air dot M A dot U S or 978-772-8220, extension 144, prior to the meeting. Hello and welcome, everyone. I'm sorry for the lateness, but we're ready to go. A couple of things I want to point out. One is that, before we approve the agenda, one is that Alan will not, Alan Menoyan will not be joining us to do a presentation. We've invited him to the next meeting. The second thing is that this meeting may be brisk. And for anyone who's wondering why things are moving so quickly, it's because we did the deliberations at previous meetings. We've done thorough deliberations. And so while deliberation can and may happen at this meeting, just be aware that we've already accomplished a lot, so we're going to move to findings and decisions fairly quickly. Yes, Jeff?
Mr. Chair, before we do the agenda, I'm sorry that Alan won't be here this evening, but we do, if I recollect, we have a fairly detailed meeting. Our next meeting is going to have Stratten come back to us and some other stuff.
Not the July 24th. Stratten's going in.
Well, I was just going to ask that it would be very helpful if Mr. Menoyan's going to do a presentation to us. If he could get it to us before the meeting, that would be very, very helpful.
Sure.
If you can make that request, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll talk to him and have that.
Thanks.
Great.
Move to approve the agenda as modified by the chair?
Second. Ken, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jeff?
It's an aye.
Kathleen?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye, so the agenda's approved. The first?
And Julie's on.
Oh, I'm sorry! I'm not used to Zoom. Julie, I'm sorry, I'm not used to the Zoom. How do you vote?
I, I say yes.
I. Didn't you ask, my apologies, I'm just not accustomed, just thank you for reminding me. So the first item is, I think we do, we don't need to continue it to the public meeting because the public meeting does require that. So the first item is One New England Way, which is a modern modification of the site plan we've already made a decision on. And.
But so we've.
No, I mean the original, not the modification.
Correct.
This is a project that came to us, I think, over a year ago, and the applicant is requesting a minor modification. We have deliberated in the past and reviewed the site plans. Can you walk us through the rest of this, please?
Yes, so we continued out this meeting till July so that the applicant could go before the Z B A for a variance. That was approved at the last meeting, which was on, I forget exactly what the date was, but it was the end of June, June 27th, I believe it was. It was.
It's the third Wednesday.
Yeah, I believe it's June 27th. So it was approved at that meeting. I believe that the decision is being written up and going to be submitted with the town clerk. What we have before us is a minor site plan modification decision. Since this is, didn't have a public hearing because it was a minor modification, there's some findings that we have in here that we should go through.
Yes, definitely.
So the first one that we have is the Building Commissioner, Town Planner and Planning Board determine that the proposed modifications are minor in nature and do not substantially alter the concept of the approved plan dated July 11, 2023.
Almost exactly a year ago.
Yes, so I believe the board should, you know, discuss that finding to make sure that everyone's in agreement on that this is a minor modification and substantially does not alter from the concept of the approved plan.
I certainly agree with that 100%.
Did you see the modification?
Yeah.
Good. I see him.
Yes. No, you were here forever. This, this came before us in, originally in April. We continued it out into May, which you were going to miss that meeting, but we continued it because we wanted to get until July so that they could.
It was June 26th, Z B A.
Okay, June 26th, that's, that's when it was.
Yeah, I'm good with the Building Commissioner and the Town Planner taking a look at it.
Just a brief summary, what they decided to do was to make their, the amount of work they were doing less ambitious. They scaled it back. However, they're retaining the full stormwater construction or stormwater plants as they originally described it to us. So those aren't changing. And all the changes that they've made reduce the impact, I mean, if anything, reduce the impact, reduce the complexity.
Yes.
So this is one of the simplest things I think we've, we've seen today.
Yeah, and the variance that they requested, so originally the variance they had was up to 75 feet, I believe it was.
In height for the front of the building.
Correct. And then when they, for this new variance that they went for, the Z B A was 58 feet.
Yeah.
So it's much, much lower.
Okay, good. Any other discussion on the first finding?
Move to approve the first finding.
Um, seconded. And then. Yep. Julie?
Yes.
Ken?
Aye.
Kathleen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Did I do that right by calling them?
I mean, it's, it's, so she's not going to vote on the overall.
Oh, so that's okay.
That's okay. She's, it's a finding, it's part of the decision, she can deliberate with us with this.
Beautiful. And then the second finding?
So the second finding is the Planning Board finds that the general and special conditions included in the Planning Board's July 11, 2023 site plan and special permit approval are still current and applicable except as amended or superseded below. And so basically what this is, is just to reinforce that with this modification, the previous conditions that were set forth in their approval still carry with this one.
Okay.
And Jeff did have some minor comments, which I did put in, which is the "and applicable." So that section was something that Jeff had an edit on, which you'll see that's incorporated into this.
Okay.
And made it plural, that's okay. It was just, in the last line, at number two.
It said was before.
It says, it says re-adding the areas of the site plan that was removed as part of this minor modification. I asked for the word "were." And in the one before, it said still current, I asked for the words "and applicable."
Yep.
As, except as amended or superseded below.
Beautiful.
That's all. Too many years of reading findings, guys.
All right, excellent.
Move to approve the second finding as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearings, yes, go ahead.
Basically, number two, you're basically saying in number two, Danny, that if they decide to undo the minor modification and go back by using the word, it's an unusual word, re-adding the areas to the site.
Yes, so the way and the reason I said that is because they said that there's a possibility that in the future they may do that full build-out, but not right now. So eventually they'll have to come, they're going to, I think, add that in the future, those areas that they have just removed. So they'll have to come back with a new site plan approval, a site plan application.
Applicant should submit a new site plan review application. Applicant wants to move forward with re-adding the areas of the site plan that were removed as part of this modification. Okay, thank you.
And actually, Ken, if I may, Mr. Chair, things are going to change enough between now and then that they're going to have to be in front of the planning board anyway.
They're going to come back again anyway.
Yeah, they're coming, they're not, they're not getting a pass like, you know, the 2004, 2004 approval is still buildable. Because things will change.
Yeah.
So, good. What else do we need to do?
I think Kathleen.
Do you have a comment?
I didn't have a comment on this question, it was just a general point of procedure question. If Heather's not here, do we need to do anything about minute taking?
No, she'll do it from the video.
Yeah, she'll watch the video.
Oh, okay.
Good call. Thank you, that's a great question, and Heather will do it from the video.
Okay.
So mumble as much as you can.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
The signature block.
Yes, yes, he just.
Thank you.
And that's actually, it looks like it's for all of them.
Yeah.
Yep.
It must have been just the carryover.
Yeah, you cut and paste.
Yes.
Hearing none? Julie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Am I voting on this, sorry?
Is this the second finding, right?
The second finding, yeah.
So I get to vote on these?
Yes.
It's part of the finding.
Just say yes if they ask. Yes.
The chair votes, yes.
Got it, okay.
Do we have to do the same thing for the supplemental conditions or no?
We can, so you can, you can vote on them if you want to, but when you approve the full decision, the reason I went through the findings was those were, those were more specific to this project than we typically have on our other findings.
Yeah, I was going to say move to approve the minor site plan modification as presented.
Yeah, I second.
For, if you don't mind, N S O I F U's U S A L S C address, one New England Way, address, one New England Way, parcel ID MAP 17, parcel 18, zoning district, industrial area for protection overlay district, just so it'll end up in the minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Any further discussion? Now this time Kathleen cannot vote.
Correct.
Okay, Julie?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes, yes, aye. So that is approved. Excellent. Great. So our public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing for the site plan approval, minor modification.
This is a public meeting, so it doesn't need to be closed.
And we did, and since the public hearing was never closed, we don't, do we need, we don't, we don't need to open or just at the end?
It's a closing. So this is a public meeting, so the different, so the other ones are public hearings, we will need to close.
That's right, but I'm saying, so we don't need to open 91 Groton Harvard Road, but we need to close it?
Correct.
Prefer to close before we do the findings and.
You can do either, doesn't matter to me.
Let's do it at the very end, just remind me so don't forget.
Yep.
So on the table is 91 Groton Harvard Road. Limhite from G P R is representing the applicant. Howdy.
Good evening, everybody. Number two, G P R, you may all call me Hood, for sure.
What? I didn't know that.
I know that, you know, I try to go by Hood, but I also try to introduce myself by my full name just because it says on my stamp. Obviously Hood is easier.
Well, welcome, guy, to see you again. Should we do stormwater permit first, do you think?
Yeah, we can go through the stormwater permit first.
And I'm going to, feel free, I'm going to let Danny lead, feel free to add in anything that.
If I may, just, do we want to kind of talk about the, I think, few items that you're going to ask us to do?
Absolutely. Yeah, let's do that. Do we need to have anything on the screen, Danny?
No, I think, these are just some of the comments that came out of our last meeting that we had, we would ask them to go to the applicant.
Yep, so the first one I've written down is regards to the native planting, the mix between shrubs. Obviously, they don't mind having a mixture of, you know, some, some native and then some newer stuff. I would ask that if, you know, I know Danny and Heather has been working on this landscaping plan. If you have recommendation for a native plant that you want to give us, we can certainly go over it during the pre-construction meeting itself, but they're certainly open to it. Item number two is, this is in regards to the invasive Japanese knotweed located on the right access path. So for the invasive, right now we have, we're requesting a quote from contractor or well and scientist to do the spraying application. Obviously, I think what we talked about last time is that the initial spraying has got to be done in two session, you know, one in the fall, one in the spring. And, you know, it's going to be a yearly application from there on until they're all gone. You know, just looking at where they are located right now, it's approximately almost 50/50 between the project site and the town land. So, you know, before we, you know, give a yes or no, we wanted to get an actual estimate for doing the work first. And then we can probably discuss that further at the pre-construction meeting. Yeah, that's kind of where we are right now. Obviously, it is an additional cost to the applicant, you know. We're just trying to give them a number and see what they decide. But this is kind of where we are right now.
Okay.
Okay. Now, item number three is about the screening for the adjacent transfer station. They're open to the idea of planting a few, you know, apravites or a few shrubs there. You know, obviously it's not going to make sense to try to screen the entire, you know, 60-foot length, but they're going to try to plant whatever they can to kind of help mitigate the screening.
Okay.
And I think that's really it. The only question I have about the conditions, you know, all seem very reasonable. I believe under the site plan approval, general conditions number nine and 10, submitting an updated stormwater management report as well as the O and M, I believe we've done that, but.
Yeah, so that's just a general condition that in case, like, if we're in this kind of situation where some tweaks had to be done after, and that's why it's just so that, once this decision is approved, that whatever additional information, if there is any final revisions that came out of this, that gets submitted. It's the same with the, the one for the plan on number 16. That's kind of the same thing, it's just I leave it blank and just leave it after so that, to make sure that everything has been dealt with, so that when we get the final sets, it's, we know it's the final set.
I got you. Okay, I'll do that. Let's work away. Yep. Okay.
All right, so let's go to, you wanted to go with the storm, major stormwater management.
Major stormwater management.
So on this one.
We have some waivers.
So the waivers, we already went through at the last meeting. And I, so I put everything in there. The, the section, the request and the waiver request vote, it was 5-0 for both. So I have both those sections in there. Put in the materials, the findings, so these are our typical findings that we have for our stormwater management permit, which we've, we did it in 33 Third Street, but if you want to go through them again, we can as well.
Is it necessary to vote for each of these findings?
No, so we can, we can do that, when you approve the decision, in the end, you're approving the findings.
The findings and your whole.
Conditions. But the reason, it was just different with the N S O I F U project, just because those findings that I put in there are not typical findings that we have.
Okay.
But if you guys want to go through the findings, it's, you let me know.
Now, these findings seem to be consistent with the conversations that we've already had. Do you have a copy of this?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, these are all consistent with the conversations we've been having since the submission of the application itself. Okay, good. Ken, Julie, Kathleen, Jeff, any questions about the findings?
Out of the screen, thank you.
General conditions, did you have any comments?
The general conditions, these are all pretty straightforward, these are the same ones that we had on our last, on our, you know, our template for the stormwater management permit. Some of them are similar to site plan approval, but there are additional ones in here that we have for our stormwater management permit. I, I think the important one we should go through is our special conditions. So these are three that I carry over on everyone, but I think we need to just review each of these just to make sure they're.
Special conditions?
Yep, so if you could go to the last page, or the second to last page.
Stormwater or site plan?
Stormwater.
Okay, number seven.
Six.
Six.
So these are the same ones that we had when we did the 33 Third Street and reviewed, we went through each of them to make sure, to determine whether or not the board wanted it for this, each specific project. So for the first one is a stormwater maintenance fee or bond may be required to ensure the O and M of the stormwater system, fee or bond. The fee or bond would be based on a cost estimate providing the value of five years of the O and M stormwater system. The fee or bond shall be in place prior to receiving the final certificate of occupancy before, from the Building Commissioner.
So, so who, so it says the word "may," so who ultimately makes the determination?
So the board does.
That's what I was wondering.
Yes.
So do we need to make that decision right now?
Yes, yeah, so that's why, that's why each of these conditions we'll go through. So in my opinion, since this is a, the stormwater system is very, there's going to be a, just one underground infiltration system. It's not like a detention basin, there's not a lot of maintenance, a lot of like that maintenance that would go into it. There is going to be, you know, the checking of, you know, through the inspection ports, cleanouts, but that's typical. And as part of the O and M, they'll have to, they'll have someone who will do that monthly as part of that plan. I mean, for this project, I don't think this is a necessary special condition.
So if we, if we feel that they don't require a few bond, we just, we scratch it?
Yeah, we just vote to not have that within the decision.
So, may I? You say they are going to check it. Who's "they"?
So as part of our, in our conditions, they have to.
The applicant?
Yes. Will have to, he's going to, they're going to hire someone because at the meeting, that's what they stated. They're going to be hiring someone, they haven't stated who it was, but they're going to be hiring it. And they, the applicant, whoever they hire, will have to be submitting the operation and maintenance logs that they've done for the full year.
So the owner of the property is responsible to have an operation and maintenance. I just want to be very clear on this, okay? Because it gets confusing. Not, not in a business, it's not as confusing, but you also said Third Street in your conversation.
Yes.
When it's a homeowner, it's a totally different animal.
Yes, you're correct.
Just want to be clear.
I just want to add a little small thing, to kind of further clarify who is taking care of the stormwater management system. You know, obviously the catch basin within the pavement area has got to get, you know, some pumped out by a Vax truck or whatever. But obviously the smaller catch basin that's sitting in the gravel area that's got to get checked monthly. That one has a separate, you know, maintenance schedule, obviously. You want to be able to go in there every month, take out the silk sack and then dump it out and make sure it's disposed of properly. So that one gets a, you know, very different log and that's got to be done, that can be done by, you know, like an onsite personnel, employee, you know, very simple. But just want to throw that in there.
Yeah.
And to kind of add a little bit more about the special condition number one, because it does talk a little bit about, you know, issuing the final certificate of occupancy from the Building Commissioner. You know, obviously they're not, they're constructing a brand-new building. They're not going to be able to get a building occupancy permit unless we give you guys an ASBIL, request for, you know, certificate and all that.
And built into the, the conditions for this, we have stages at which they need to notify the D P W when they're installing this, the, the stormwater system. And that way, you know, there's, there are checkpoints to make sure things are being done properly.
The work is being inspected, it's being done.
Exactly.
So do we, do we, do we need to vote on this special?
Yes. Yep, so you'll vote to either keep it or remove it.
So I just make a motion that the Air Planning Board not require a bond for this particular project, 91 Groton Harvard Road.
Second. Any further discussion? Julie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, Kathleen? Nope. Jeff?
Yes.
And then, and the chair votes, yes, aye.
Take that goodness back to the.
Good. And for the other two special conditions?
Yes, so for this one, in the case where the Town of Air takes ownership of a project from the, from the owner, a maintenance fee will be required, an annual fee will be based on the estimated value of the annual routine, O and M and so of the stormwater system, additional fees may apply should additional maintenance be required. So this does not apply for this project. Typically where you'll see this is subdivisions, where the town is going to eventually take them over. And they have like detention basins, catch basins and all that that need to eventually keep, you have to upkeep the O and M for it, for the stormwater system. But in this occasion, it's going to stay private always.
So do we need this number two special condition? What do the rest of you think?
Don't need it.
Don't need it, Julie? Jeff? Kathleen? I don't see the need for that.
I can think of a rare case from the town to put the property, but at that point, we'll deal with it.
Okay. So I, can I make a motion? I'd like to make a motion that we strike special condition number two and that we don't require a maintenance fee in, in, in light of the possibility of taking ownership of the project.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Julie?
Yes.
Thank you, Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then the third one?
So the third one, as part of our stormwater regulations, at the end of the project, when a stormwater system is built, they need to get a certificate of completion on that, on the stormwater system itself. And so within our regulations, we require that that be recorded at the registry of deeds. So that is a special condition that I kept in here, I think that is applicable for this project.
It, it goes on to state that not only does it need to be recorded at the registry of deeds, but electronic copy needs to be submitted to Danny's office. Move to keep condition three.
Seconded.
Discussion?
Yes, please.
So I'd just like to clarify the language in the thing where it says a certificate. I'd like to amend it so it says a certificate of completion for the project in accordance with the requirements of the stormwater management permit. So it just says a certificate of completion, but it doesn't refer what exactly that certificate is for.
Okay.
I'd like to add the language that it refers to the, this particular permit, the major stormwater management permit.
Major.
So I'm going to give a shot, I think what you said is certificate of completion for the project in accordance with the stormwater management plan. With the accepted stormwater management plan for the project, okay?
Yeah, so there's some reference to the fact that it's.
So in accordance.
Specific permit.
With.
Because the language looked like it could be.
That's fair enough, that's all. It's just, it's the detail we didn't get to.
So do you want to say in accordance with the stormwater management permit?
I did, yeah.
Yeah.
I would say that typically it does cover under the engineering certification, but.
Yeah, that's fine. We're not engineers.
One way or the other. ASBIL certifications we've seen from G P R in the last five years. I'd like to go back to the, you can report at the next meeting, you can go back to the office and let me know.
So we have a, did you make the motion?
Yes, let's move, 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 I consider that friendly, so move to approve with Mr. Diskin's changes, it's special condition number three.
We already have a.
And I'm happy to give it a read.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Julie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. So then we finally need a vote to approve the major stormwater management permit itself.
So move. Actually, move to approve the major stormwater management permit. Permit number S W 24-202, I already have it written out for you. Thank you.
You do? Do you have the motion?
Motion's on the second page. I was just going to make it up. Motion for, move to approve.
Oh, thank you.
Motion, uh, the, 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 motion for approval of the site plan pursuant to section 245, 5 and 6 Stormwater Management of Air general bylaws, subject to the standard conditions, special condition numbered one through, I'm going to say special condition numbered three in this decision.
Exactly.
And the following conditions presented at the meeting. Are you going to change the number from?
Yes.
So special condition numbered one.
Number three is, special condition number three is the only one we need.
Yes, but it would be numbered to be number one.
Oh, it would be renumbered, thank you.
Okay.
Excellent. Do I have a second? I seconded. All right. Do we, any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ken.
You want to check the way he's got this, the motion for approval of the site plan?
It's, you're right, it's supposed to say stormwater management permit.
And I was just going to wing it, and actually, and I was actually going to quote the stormwater permit number.
Okay, so, the motion is for approval of the stormwater...
Management permit.
Management permit.
Pursuant to...
And you gave the number of the permit.
That's it, permit number SW 24-02.
Yep.
2402.
Now we're at engineering, the engineers.
001 must have been Aho's.
Yes, it was.
Subject to the standard conditions, special, now it's number three. Special conditions numbered...
It's going to be renumbered to number one.
Number one, what's it take? It's the only one that lives, that, that made it through the voting process.
Okay, so, that was my discussion.
Jeff? Move to approve.
And I think I seconded, right?
Yes, Jonathan seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. How do you vote, Julie?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye, so that's approved.
All right, so...
You're going to...
This, we're not going to, oh, yeah, this will be updated, I, so on my word document, I already have your comments set, fixed into this. I just didn't, I just printed these out before that.
This is actually what the permit looks like, this particular document.
This is the actual draft. And then, so we can get to the site plan approval.
We've already done all the waiver requests.
Yep, all the waiver requests have been already done.
They're voted and they're in here.
Yep.
I've read through them. If this is the same draft we got, yeah, I'm satisfied. I don't know, but you can, you have a finer tooth comb than I do. Did you get what time this morning, I sent you that email?
So... What time was it?
About even 4:20.
Okay, so with this, we have to go through the findings, right, Danny?
Yeah, so, we don't have to go through the findings on this one, because when you approve it, these are, are findings that we typically already have in our site plan approval template anyways.
I've noticed that, so, there's nothing special here.
There's nothing special with this project that I felt needed to be added into this.
So if we, just walk us, yeah, walk us through, anything that needs to be walked through here?
So, the, so we went through the waivers.
Yep, those are already...
Those were already on there. We have our materials that was submitted.
Yep.
These are our findings.
Which are consistent with any approval, right?
Correct.
And then usual general conditions?
Yep, usual general conditions. All the conditions that are in this one were in the stormwater management permit as well.
And this has no special conditions that I...
Not this one. There, there was no special conditions that we felt were, that were needed for this project.
Except for the condition that Jonathan loses a vowel in his name when he signs it.
Okay. I need to lose some weight anyway, so thank you, sir.
Move to approve the site plan.
I just want to ask a question first, I'm sorry, Jeff.
No.
So the modification plan, section six, there's nothing we need to discuss there, with that section six of this?
No, so section, section, section six is something that I carry in, in all of our site plan approvals, so that we have the difference, the difference between what a minor modification is and what a major modification is.
Great, I'm sorry, Jeff, you may proceed.
I was saying, move to accept the site plan approval for North Atlantic Concrete, 270 Air Road.
What's the matter?
I'm sorry, the applicant is 270 Air Road, is it not?
The applicant is...
Project's...
Yes, I, I read the, I, so, move to accept the site plan approval for North Atlantic Concrete, the address being 91 Groton Harbor Road, Air, Mass., parcel ID map 13 parcel eight.
Thank you, sir.
As presented.
Do I have a second?
I second?
Uh, oh, no, not on site plan.
Okay.
Uh, not the approval, the actual vote for the whole thing.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Chair seconds. Any further discussion before we go to vote? Hearing none. Julie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Congratulations, huh?
Congratulations.
Have a nice summer.
The making of sausages and the making...
We'll see you soon. There's just some force to me, in two weeks. Anything else for us?
Uh, we have a couple of things coming up.
Do you?
Yeah, we do. But they're just at a standstill right now, unfortunately, we're trying to work through those.
At one of Scully Road, they were working on or something.
Oh, you're doing the Scully Road?
I don't...
We are, we're waiting for a decision from Charlie at the moment.
Okay, that's Zero Scully, I think we've had some conversations about that before.
Okay.
Well, neither of that, still, you still want a good summer, and we need to...
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for 91 Groton Harbor Road, map 13 parcel eight.
Seconded.
Oh.
Okay. I seconded, yep. Any, any discussion? Hearing none. How do you vote, Ken?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so...
Don't let the door hit you on the way out.
Stay cool, literally.
I'll, I'll let, I'll send you an email with the dates and everything on when it's, to pick it up and all that.
Yeah, most of them will follow through, for your construction meeting, something like that.
We do not have a representative of 77 Pittsburgh Road.
We do not, but...
Go ahead, no?
We, we can, yeah. They, Kevin knew that we were doing the decision, and the applicant knows that we're doing the decision. They, they had a chance to review the decision, they did not give me, they didn't have any comments.
No comments?
No comments. Kevin did provide me with the waivers, which we'll have to vote on and go through.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll need to do that.
Yeah, so with this project specifically, 77, so, due to the fact that it's just a change of use, there's a lot of additional things that we require under our site plan regulations that didn't apply to this project, because all they're doing is internal fit-up.
Yep.
And that new egress on Oakhurst. So, I didn't, so I, I had Kevin provide me with a list of waiver requests that they need specifically for this project, and just for future reference, this is something that with a minor site plan, we would get, be able to get rid of all these waivers that...
Because they just wouldn't be part of it in the first place.
Exactly.
Wouldn't be required.
Yeah.
Do, and I assume we have to go through each of these one by one?
Yes.
And can Kathleen vote any of these?
No, not the waiver request on this, because, okay. All right, so let's go to...
Refer, excuse me, Mr. Chair, when you refer to Kevin, you said Kevin several...
Kevin Conover, from David E. Ross Associates.
Thank you.
Sorry.
So, shall I just read, we go one by one, shall I read and then, then request?
I'm happy with him not being here.
So the first waiver request is regards section 4B, building structure and appurtenances. The requirement states that the plan shall depict the location of all new buildings with associated grading and structure height. This project does not propose any new buildings, and the proposed use does not require any new grading for the property, and therefore does not require any architectural drawings. In addition, the proposed use of this project will not require any exterior signage. Thank you for putting the reasoning.
So, yeah, this, this is what I request from them, then.
They put the reasoning in, and I appreciate that.
Move to accept the waiver request for section 4B, building structure and appurtenances as read by the chair.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ken?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Julie? I mean Jeff?
Yes.
And chair votes aye, so that waiver has been approved. The next waiver request is section 4C, landscaping, open space drainage, stormwater and environmental features. During a pre-application meeting, was determined that the proposed use of the property will not require a stormwater management plan or any proposed landscaping.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Who made that determination, please?
That was between myself and the building commissioner.
Thank you very much. Move to approve section 4 dot C, waiver for landscaping, open space drainage, stormwater and environmental features.
Seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, I think Jeff had a good question. I think somehow in the response, they should, you should include that language, not just pre-application, but add, during our pre-application meeting with the building commissioner and the town planner, meaning it was determined, so we understand it.
And I guess the question I have, and this is not, not an argument...
Yes.
But typically, stormwater I would think would be a DPW input.
Actually...
But, but again, in this project, it's the reuse of the inside of a building, so I don't see it as applicable, don't need to go down that road right now. Thanks.
Just think it really clears it up when we...
Yep, thank you. Do you accept that friendly amendment?
Absolutely friendly amendment, absolutely acceptable.
Good. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Julie?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Third waiver request, section 4D utilities. The project as submitted intends to use the existing utilities on the property. Anything else that needs to be said here?
I'm going to assume that the, section 4 dot D talks about how you're going to bring the new utilities to the pro, to the project. Doesn't exist.
Doesn't exist.
Move to accept the waiver request for 4 dot D utilities.
Second. We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Julie?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
The chair votes aye, that waiver is accepted. Fourth waiver request is section 4E, vehicular traffic circulation and parking. As stated above, the project proposes a minimal amount of parking, and the proposed use will not require a specific traffic flow or traffic impact statement. As discussed, I think the idea was two or three employees from across the street, and the, and the estimated traffic was maybe two or three trucks?
It'll be a box truck that may come at late, like, just between their, their switch of the shifts.
Move to approve section 49D waiver request for vehicular traffic circulation and parking as submitted.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Julie?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye. That's been, that waiver's accepted. Fifth waiver is section 4F, pedestrian and bicycle circulation safety. This proposed use of this property does not necessitate this requirement. Given its location and its use, there's no anticipated pedestrian or bicycle circulation in that environment.
Move to approve the waiver request under section 4 dot F, pedestrian and bicycle circulation and safety as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ken has seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Julie?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that's been accepted.
And there's one more.
And there's one more. The final waiver request is section 4G, outdoor lighting. Currently, the site has the necessary amount of lighting for the existing use and proposed use, and therefore will not require a detailed lighting plan or a photometric plan for any outdoor lighting. Right, they're not even adding any lighting, just the lights are there.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to, if I may, Mr. Chair, and again, this is not to generate an argument or anything like that, we're, I don't recall, we're neighbors? The neighbors were at the last meeting about this. This is an opportunity for, if you've got an existing situation that's not working for neighbors, where they could have input on lighting.
Yeah, they were notified.
So, I just want to make sure neighbors are notified.
Yep, this is a public...
This is just one of those things where, you know, you don't want to give the abutter no option...
Yep.
To address a problem, but since, again, it's the inside use of an, of an existing building, you know, if we didn't grant this waiver, they probably have to do the photometric for the entire property. Which is, I think, draconian.
Certainly.
So, I would move to approve the waiver request for section 4 dot G, outdoor lighting as presented.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Julie?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes aye.
Yeah, if I may, just as an aside, this is an opportunity to fix a bad lighting situation, should this come forward in the future.
And again, with the findings, these are the general findings, general conditions of the standard, importantly, as are after occupancy, and the notes about modification, these are just standard, there's no, no special conditions that I see here.
No, and there's no construction condition, like, general conditions about construction and any of that, because there's nothing really occurring on that site.
I would move to accept the site plan approval for the permit PSPR 24-04, applicant AVS Incorporated, care of Jacob Cashin, owner James Moore Enterprises LLC. The address of the project is 77 Pittsburgh Road, parcel ID map 11 parcel 16, the light industrial district as presented.
I have a...
With your approved waivers, go ahead.
Thank you. I just have a question about the language under number one site plan approval. I know he didn't read from that, but it's still here in the written document. Subject to the standard conditions and special conditions numbered 1 through 12, there are no special conditions, right?
Correct, yeah, so I'll just, that's just going to be stricken.
So, does that need a friendly amendment? Doesn't need that? I just wanted, for the record, so we're striking that, because it's not relevant here.
No, I, so that would have been, that is going to be deleted when I get to, when I do the final draft.
If I hear a second, I will be called. You made the motion, right? I've got a motion from Jeff, I think we just got a motion.
Let's, let's ask for a second.
I'm looking for a second. I will second. There you go. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none. Julie, go, go ahead.
So basically Danny, what you're saying is we don't need any kind of final as-built on this drawing here because it's just not any kind of work other than the driveway being punched onto the other street.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's nothing other than just putting in that, that gravel drive, that small, uh, at the, on Oakhurst.
And they're going to have to get a permit for that through DPW.
Correct.
It's going to require, it's going to require the, um, drawing.
Yeah, for, on, yeah, through the DPW.
DPW requires, they, they, they sell the driveway cut permit.
Yep.
And they get required all the paperwork. And it will, and it will get.
And then, and then.
It's crazy if he doesn't record it, I'll lay that right now.
And then we'll also, we have to sign off on the, for the final certificate of occupancy too, so.
You do?
I do. So, uh, for that one, I'll, by then.
This was the project that I brought up, the question of there was no accessible parking shown on the plan and they never really.
He said he was willing to put up a sign if, if, if the board wanted it.
Well, what I'm getting at, he says five designated parking spaces, but there, none of those five are indicated to be.
Correct.
Accessible size. So that was my, I'd like to.
Yeah, Charlie, Charlie felt that it wasn't required based on his determination.
Okay.
I mean, he's, it's a private business that he employs only certain people, so.
But you can't, I can't discriminate against.
No, I, and I'm. No, no, I don't mean it in that way. I mean, if, if, if he hires someone who is handicapped, needs a, handicap acceptable, they can always put the sign up when, if they need to.
I'm talking about striping this, this space and putting it as a known space.
Yeah, he could do it at the, the last one on the left. There's nothing to the left.
I just wanted to see it done, period. I don't, I don't see it on the plan.
Because I don't think it's, because I know the building inspector said it wasn't required.
Okay, I'll go up and paint up myself then.
Where are we guys?
You got a second and a discussion?
I got a second. It was in mid discussion. We already have the second. Any further discussion? Julie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ken?
No.
Jeff?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. So do we have an approved?
Yes, we do, we do. But can I ask, uh, just for the record, we'll need to know. Why was that a no?
Because in America, we put accessible parking in every project we take a look at. We have an accessibility committee in town and I think they should be looking at every job that comes before this, any board that, that covers the requirements of the accessibility for parking, for sidewalks, for whatever case might be. And as a plan, we had a chance to do that right here and make it a condition. We didn't, so aborting them.
Okay.
Soon as the photometric. At a much different level of importance, but yeah.
All right, so.
Now motion to close.
We just need the motion to close the.
Move to close the hearing for 77 Pittsburgh Road, map 11, parcel 16.
Uh, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Julie?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Close. We have projects.
We'll talk about it afterwards.
Project status updates?
All right.
Anything, anything new?
So, um, went by 42 Park Street to look at it. Um, as you, I'm sure everyone drives by by that area. The structure's basically completely up. Um, they, I think they're going to be starting interior inciting soon. The site as a whole, they really haven't done much other than just the building getting that done. I went out there just to look at the site to make sure that it, that it still was looking good. They, um, it does look good. It, they lit it, it is a little overgrown in the back where the, you know, wetland area is in the back, back.
Everything's growing like crazy this week.
I know.
Weeds like dryness.
Oh, yeah, it's crazy.
So it's, 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 um, it's coming along. Uh, I, they've been submitting weekly SWIP reports, so they're staying on that, which is good.
It's good.
The only thing right now is just going to be, you know, once they get ready to start doing the actual site to make sure that the, uh, that they're staying on top of that, uh, erosion control. And just because all the way in the back, it's so overgrown, just to make sure that there's no issues. I went over to, uh, Panther Place, um, that they were working on the sidewalk, the new sidewalk on the left-hand side that goes to Briggs Circle. Uh, I think it's Briggs Circle, the one on the left.
Yeah, yeah, I know what you mean.
Um, so they were working on getting that, uh, the gravel down for that. They were, um, and then, um, that's really, they were in, working on the inside of the first house on the right, but that's really the most work that's really going on right now. Um, I'm not sure. I mean, they just might be taking a couple of days off right now on starting any other construction. And I'll update everyone on, uh, so MBTA, um, bylaw, we, I sent it out to, to, uh, to Jonathan and to Ken for our, our meeting sometime next week. Um, Alan, I gotta get with Alan to figure out when it's gonna, when he wants to do it. Um, I know Alicia's free as well, um, but Al has just been out and, um, trying to think if there's anything else that I need to.
Anything about Zero Scully? I mean.
So Zero Scully, I know right now he's waiting on a determination from, uh, the building commissioner between the, they've had, uh, Tom Gibbons, attorney Gibbons, reach out to, to Charlie on, on the use.
Is that the same, I'm going to go back to 42 Park Street there for a minute, but is Zero Scully the same piece, piece of property that went to the zoning board of appeals a year or so ago because it was a, um, I want to say it's not a landscaping company, but a landscaping wholesaler?
I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. I can tell you it's the property just before you get to Shepley Hill. It's on the left-hand side, so if you're going down the road, Shepley Hill's at the end on the left, it's the property just before that.
Okay.
It, it, uh, butts, like, it's close to the dam.
Open area there.
Yeah, yeah, it's all.
A building that's already there.
Yeah, there's nothing there. There's, it's all wo, it's all wooded. Um, there's, there's some, there's some. Yeah, it's a wooded lot. There's like floodplain over there and everything, but based on the design that they have, uh, that I've seen, it's, it's very small impact, very, very small.
Okay, thank you. Cause there was, a year ago, there was a, a project that Charlie said they needed to go to ZVA and get.
I think it may have been, it may have been the same property, um, because.
Building in it.
Yeah, cause I, I think it may have been the same property. They were proposing to do a landscape, but the use was not in our table or something.
Yeah.
So I think it may have been, just based on, on what I have in my records, I know what Zero Scully did come to you, was supposed to come to you guys, but never made a submission, so I don't know if it's the same one.
Okay, thanks.
I know about this project and I'm, I have to think about it. I met the gentleman at the Shepley walkthrough.
Yes. He used to be a Bedford fire.
Yeah, he's a fireman who has a, um, a fire protection alarm company.
Yep.
And he's finally reached a point in his career where he can own a piece of property to run his business out of. And that piece of property works for him.
Good.
I've forgotten the gentleman's names. What, actually, what great guy.
Yeah, he was.
Incredibly high energy for somebody of my, more energy than me, Ken. Yeah. Um, can I ask?
Yes.
You skipped on it quickly. The MBTA?
Yes.
I'd love to see if there's a draft just re.
Yeah, I'll send that over to you. I sent it to them because, just because we were having a meeting where we're setting up our meeting.
No, I get it because we can't have quorum's and stuff like that, but that's something that I was.
Yep, I'll send that over to you.
Yeah.
Uh, for, for Ken's reappointment for your.
I'll go back to 42 Park Street. I'm sorry.
On updates.
So here's a question that I want you to think about and maybe I'm wrong.
Okay.
Is there a dumpster on the site?
Is there a dumpster on the site?
I don't think there is.
I know there's a, so do you know where the, um, they have like a container between the two properties? There's a dumpster over here. I don't know if that's, if they had asked 44 Park Street to use that dumpster to store it there. I know they used to have a dumpster on site. Um, it was a smaller one. It was like one of the ones that you would typically see at a, a store. Yeah, like one of those, um, the ones that just come in through the front, tip them up. But I don't, I don't think I saw a dumpster when I was there today.
I'm concerned that, uh, just creating a pile of trash over there from construction debris.
Out there? Oh, no, I, I walked the site. It's a clean site.
Okay.
Very clean. They've kept it very well.
I was surprised the other day, they were, uh, just before the 4th of July, I was over there and they were loading debris on a truck.
Okay, fine.
So they, I think they're doing, I think they're loading out at the end of the day, quite honestly.
Yeah, she, she's kept the site very clean.
And, yeah, and she's been there. I've, I've seen the applicant there more times than I would. I actually, I think they were having a very serious discussion, the applicant and the, uh, GC.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
She's very hands-on.
She owns it.
She's very hands-on.
Anything else 42 Park Street?
No.
So for the, uh, is there, do we need to vote or anything for?
Move to reappoint Ken Diskin as a planning board member of the affordable housing working group.
Seconded. And Kathleen can vote on that? Oh, we can all vote. Excellent. So, um, Ken, uh, can Ken vote? Ken, how do you vote on this?
Well, you want any discussion for us for clarification?
Yeah. I wasn't even, I was going to put in, should he be willing to do it, but I decided not to.
Sorry, yeah, some discussion.
For clarification, I'm also on the affordable housing committee. And the affordable housing committee has two members already on the working group. So I could not be a representative from the affordable housing committee. So for clarification, I need to be the represent, a representative from the planning board so that we don't create a quorum when we meet as a working group. So there are two of us from the planning boards, Nathan King and myself, and there are two people from the affordable housing committee. Therefore, no quorum ends up happening.
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you for the clarification.
Affordable housing is, um, what?
Affordable housing committee.
Yeah, that's Janet, that's Janet's committee, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Any further? Ken, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kathleen? Julie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ken.
Can I just, one thing on the working group?
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Can you?
We just had a big meeting.
Yes, yes, we actually had, I actually had a big meeting and it actually went very well. We have some, some good things to think about and, uh, uh, direction in which we want to go with this new set of, um, meetings for the fall. Um, the, on our list right now is the inclusionary housing bylaw. Get that, uh, updated. Uh, so that I've started working on. Uh, I'm hoping to get the, uh, the working group, uh, the, the draft or something close to a draft for our, our next meeting, uh, which I believe is July 23rd, something like that. And then, um, some of the other is to figure out how we're going to, uh, expand, you know, bring in more affordable housing in the sense of infilling projects and bringing in a more affordable, um, housing in, in the sense of, uh, possibly with the inclusionary housing bylaw being changed.
Under?
Oh, under. Inclusionary housing bylaw being changed and payments and lieu, like, thinking about, you know, what the potential for that is to, that we could do for, you know, going down the, in the future for that. Possibly buying a property, you know, for affordable housing. There's different options that we've been discussing. There's also been discussion about, you know, looking at, uh, looking at the A1 zone, the dimensional requirements in there, seeing if there's any way we can maybe try to make them a little bit smaller, just to see, does it work? So that's another option that we're just looking at. Uh, so I feel like we have some, some good discussion ideas to, to start thinking about and, you know, over the next couple of months, we'll really start narrowing down what it is we're going to be bringing to, uh, the next town meeting.
Excellent.
And then also history on this, on this group. Can, I was told that this, uh, the working group is a group from the planning board. Um, it was, it was.
No, it's a co-group.
No, so.
Multiple groups.
So, and, and, well, meaning it came, it was, it was created from the planning board voting to create it, is what I was told.
No.
So that's what I'm trying to understand the history here.
If I may.
From the affordable housing committee.
Janet Prodeckus is the chairman of the affordable housing committee. There were, there were discussions, I, I, I believe I was chair at the time, and there was a discuss, there were discussions that we have the affordable housing trust, we have the affordable housing committee, we have, um, uh, Jen also chairs the.
CPC.
No.
The housing authority.
The housing authority. And it gets a little, and, and the trust hadn't existed yet. It was, we were very, very infant, in the infancy of that. And it was determined that we've got so much energy around affordable housing that it would be nice to have experts from the planning board, experts from the committee, experts from the housing, the, the housing commission to get together. It's not, it doesn't exist in our bylaws. It's a working group. And that was the genesis of it. So if anybody was going to take, uh, either carry the mantle of, um, of creation, I'd blame it on Janet Prodeckus.
It, it started out, um, also with the concept that we were going to be working towards zoning changes. That was always part of the concept, but also that we needed to have town hall on board with us. That's why we asked the planner and Charlie Schultz, or the commissioner, to be involved. Uh, I think initially it started out more as a, the group of people and citizens, but it, it got bigger when we were able to get you guys involved in town hall.
And, okay, and, and it really what it comes down to is lots of people were working on affordable housing in different ways. We're doing inclusionary, we're doing, um, uh, we're, we're doing our stuff with bylaws. There, it's so, it just made sense to put these people in a room together and get everybody putting over in the water and pulling in the same direction.
Okay.
So that's why it exists.
Just, and we went to the, that, that, that's a fantastic question that you asked incidentally. I think it's appointed by the select board.
Yes, and that's what I also was.
Right, I believe it was appointed by the select board.
What I was also under the impression was, I was told that went to the select board.
Yeah, we're going to the select board.
Okay, okay.
Absolutely.
I just, I want to make sure to get this on the record.
Oh, okay.
But no, it wa, it was not, it wa, it was not born from the planning board.
Right, and we have an obligation, I believe, to report back to the select board, like.
And that's.
Which we did before town meeting.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Which you did before town meeting.
And Danny, the, the challenging thing here is, uh, there was a time way before you got to town where it was difficult to populate required commissions and, uh, boards. So every commissioner board out there wanted a, can't, wanted a member of the planning board, select board on it.
Yeah.
So at one point we were looking at, you know, we have a meeting every night of every week of every month, and so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, before we vote on the May 28th minutes, I just have a question. Do you know what minutes are still open that we need to? Or how caught up are we with what remains?
I believe Heather said that the May 28th meetings were the la, was what we had open and then she'll, she has to get us last meetings.
What about, so, so the two June meetings we haven't, did, do we vote, is it possibly voted on the June 11th?
Yeah, we did, we did the June 11th.
So after this.
We skipped the 28th, so it's June 23rd, June 25th meeting.
So we'll only have the June 25th and today's meeting.
Correct.
After we vote on this.
Yes.
Just June 25th and then this, but otherwise we're.
Yeah.
So on the table are, uh, is the approval of the May 28th, 2024, air planning board minutes. So I have a motion.
So moved.
I will second. I believe that Ken cannot vote because he wasn't there. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. But Kathleen?
I think I was actually there.
She wasn't there either, but Jeff was there.
You three.
Us three.
Yeah, I saw my name all over those, so I assumed I was in the room.
Did I get a motion to, for the approval in a second? Yeah, it did. Did I get that? Did I seconded, right? Okay. Julie, how do you vote?